Meeting of the Valley here planning on. Jim, the first item on the agenda is 152 Depot Street.
Yeah.
The date on that?
Absolutely. So, thank you, Board. Good to see everyone. 152 Depot Street. The hearing is now closed. It may remind the Board that at the last meeting, the Board did close the public hearing session, so that means no further intake of information and comments from both the applicant and the public. It's now time for the Board's deliberation on the matter. Before you, as you guys well know, are really three separate and distinct decisions that you need to make three separate motions on. There is the major business complex special permit, the flexible parking special permit, and the development plan and stormwater management permit. I'll remind you too, Mr. Chairman, for the special permits, if you'd like, as we do have a new member of the Board, and that's excellent. We do, we did have then a vacancy because of the ongoing process, so you are able to appoint the associate for that one vacancy for just a special permits for this matter.
Okay. So, okay, then when it comes down to that, we'll make an appointment for Rob Luccher as the alternate to act as a member in good standing to vote on a special permit and from when it comes to that. Anything else?
That's it for this topic.
Okay. So, the public meeting is closed. We had some lengthy discussions at the last meeting on this, and I believe we need to continue those amongst ourselves. what is the feeling of the Board, the best way to move forward? In regards to discussion or motion?
I have nothing more to add than discussion with anybody else in the board.
Brian?
I don't have anything to add. If I agree, no more. Nothing to add?
I'm in agreement. I think this has been vetted for a long time. The public has been very involved. We have listened to the public for over six months. So, I think now the next step is to entertain motions. I would entertain a motion for the major business complex special permit. That is something Rob can vote on. Nick, as you know, because you've missed several meetings, you'll be unable to vote on these items tonight. But you're fit, you're obviously feel free to lend your opinion for any additional discussion.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion on the special permit favorable decision.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
So, to be clear, we're having Jim write conditions that we're going to review.
We did this, conditions were provided to us last meeting. This will enable Jim to draft, I assume, a favorable decision on the major business complex special permit.
For 152 Depot?
152 Depot Street. Unless there's other discussion, I would call for the vote. All in favor? No, we have to go individually, correct?
We do, because we try to development plan, and then we also have. But you're really just giving Jim the permission to write a favorable decision?
Correct. But I still think you want, should we?
To have him write a favorable decision for the development plan, and then you can also make a motion to do a favorable decision or not favorable, however you choose for the special permit.
We need to do three separate and distinct looks.
I wrote, yes.
And motion.
Yes.
So, I have a motion on the floor made and seconded for a favorable decision for the major business complex special permit.
Aye.
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 That motion passes unanimously. I would entertain a motion about the flexible parking special permit. Jim, I know this is a special permit, but Rob is not allowed to vote on this, correct?
No, he is. The flexible parking special permit, he's allowed to, yes.
Okay. So, the same voting criteria exist on this. I would entertain a motion for the flexible parking special permit.
I'll make a motion, give you your ask, favorable decision.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor that has been seconded to have the town planner draft a favorable decision on the flexible parking special permit. I will call for the vote unless there's any other discussion.
Aye.
Still seeing that hearing then?
Aye.
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 I vote the same, that will be unanimous decision. The next one is the development plan, stormwater management plan. Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but I do not believe Rob can vote on this.
That's correct. This is a majority vote.
And neither can he make a second.
That's correct.
I would entertain a motion for the development plan, stormwater management permit.
I make a motion, Jim, draw a favorable decision for the stormwater management permit.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor. The other town planner draft a favorable decision for the development plan and stormwater management plan. Now is the time for a discussion? Any points anyone wants to raise in the board? I will call for the vote.
Aye.
Thank you.
Shut off.
Okay. Sorry, didn't mean to point to you. So, that motion passes unanimously. I would recommend a motion to have the Board review the decisions at the next meeting.
The motion continued here.
It's already been closed, so that we will continue it to June 9th.
To 9th at 7:00 p.m.
To look at the decision.
Do I have a motion to have these decisions reviewed at the next meeting? Make a motion. Do I have a second? Second. We have a motion on the floor and it has been seconded to review the decisions that we rendered into this evening to be drafted by June and reviewed at the June 9th meeting at 7:00 p.m. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. Before we move forward, I want to thank the Board, the applicant, and especially the public for their participation over the past approximately six and a half months. It's been a long winding road. We have deliberated and vetted this project significantly. And again, we will review the decisions on June 9th. Next item on the agenda is 206 Mechanic Street. Can you please, Jim, bring us up to date on this? I think we have some updated plans.
Yes, yes, as the Chairman, we do have updated plan set incorporating some of the final comments that were made from the Board at the last meeting. I'll remind you that the Board did leave this hearing open so that we could incorporate those items. And the Board did request that I draft a favorable decision for your consideration once the hearing is closed.
Floor is now the applicants.
Good evening. For the record, John Cusick with Board Engineering. I may need his help to. As the last hearing, I think the last request we had was really a simple request. It was on the driveway, Mechanic Street driveway, essentially to switch out the fence that we had there with some plantings, specifically a row of green giant arborvitae. So, we did that up the entire length of that, of the driveway on the left as you're entering. We also added some landscaping behind the sign that was there. And it was requested that we add it, if we could, all the way down the road on the right, which we were going to do that, and then we realized that's where snow storage is. We couldn't put trees there. So, instead, what we did to get the same effect was we added a row of again of arborvitae on the sunsuit parallel to the first loading dock, which I will show you momentarily. But that does the same purpose, I think, with what the Board was looking to accomplish, which is screening from Mechanic Street side. But again, that allows the snow storage area to be accessible and not get ruined after winter to keep that, to keep that open. So, those have been added to the plan set at the request.
Would you be able to share that on your end? Let me see if I can pull that up.
Perhaps. Let me, let me take a peek. Is it, it's posted on the web, right?
It was in the Dropbox, too.
Right, yep. Yeah, give me one second.
Yep.
I think that was, that was essentially the extent of the comments. Prior to that, we addressed everything and presented all of the changes that the Board had requested, along with the exhibits that Jim worked into the, into the record. So, pretty, pretty straightforward. I don't believe there's anything outstanding from the drawing.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, yeah, certainly. The bike path. Yeah, how did we incorporate that in?
That was through a decision language such that we would talk to DOT through that process of applying for a permit. And that would be one of the discussion points that would be in there that we need to talk about. They wanted the bike path there, and they didn't have any restrictions against it.
Jim, is that in the current draft? Bike path, them supporting the bike path?
Yes, discussions with DOT, I believe, is in the current draft. We can go over that momentarily if the Board has finished reviewing the plan.
I would like to do that once we close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, if there's questions to go back and forth with the applicant, but we closed the public hearing?
No, we're not, we're not, no, you can go back and forth until we close the public hearing. Do you have any other questions?
No, I just wanted to see where it was incorporated in. I didn't see it when I reviewed it. It's in tight, so that's what I wanted to wait until we did that and then we were going to move.
Jim, is that the best way to do it? What do you want to review it in the open meeting?
Well, so, we can discuss it in the open meeting, but reviewing the decision itself should be held after the hearing.
That's why I agree, should do. Do you have any questions? Someone was presented tonight, although we're waiting for it to come up. So, we've had a chance to look at it in the documents that were sent to us. Brian, do you have any questions on the decision or anything you've presented to us so far?
Joe, the only thing I was going to ask is, there was some discussion about the facade by the loading dock. And I think you guys are going to look into making it somewhat matching to the front. Has that looked into? Either through painting or color changes?
So, I think that the facade on the loading dock, I think the colors all match. What we did on the, on the loading dock side, again, you've got the docks, not much architecturally you can do. We focused on the, on the screening of that, A, from what we talked about with the building being set back far and then down low. But beyond that, with the trees that were added at the last meeting, or the additional trees we had, some of the dead core. So, that was done to, you know, essentially buffer between the view of the building. But from an architectural standpoint, we have not changed anything on the dock side. We have clarified on the, on the other side, there was the reveal of the building to make sure it wasn't a flat face. And then we provided some, some language within the decision to provide more clarity to that about how far the pop outs would, would come in and out. So, that should have been in the decision language.
Can you, Jim, can you bring up the renderings?
It was just, it was just up on the screen. I saw it, it was just up there. I think it's the one that was just on there before that.
Yeah, sorry, I'm having a little bit difficulty with it.
I guess just one quick question is, I assume if, you know, this is obviously going through DOT. Yes, so if there's any major changes, I imagine it's going to come back to us. If it's minor changes, not so much. I think that might be a true question.
It looks good on our side, Jim.
A lot going on right now.
That looks good on our side.
I'm sorry, Rob, what was that?
So, the, so, I know this is going through DOT next. If there's any major changes, I imagine it's going to come back to us for review. Not that you really anticipated, but.
Right, so, the DOT is actually the final say on the matter. You know, we can express our interest early on. But typically, at least how it's been done, especially on 140 here, is we, we've expressed, you know, we want sidewalk, we want drainage, et cetera. And DOT has tended to assist us in getting that accomplished, but it's, it tends to be their specifications, their way of doing things. And we don't really, I, I nor the DPW Director really a party to, to the final design per se.
That's in terms of our hands.
Yeah, that makes sense, Jimmy. That, that answers my question. I didn't know if, if it was required or anything. So, but no, that, that makes sense. Hopefully, the DOT review process is streamlined for this project. Yeah.
And that will hopefully be for you guys. Very much so. It's, they're, they're, they're sort of backed up right now. But that's something we will absolutely review with them and
Yep.
And go through that process. So, I think on the landscape plan, Jim, if you could go to that, which I believe is sheet scrolling on my end here. Landscape plan A, which is sheet 15, I believe. So, you'll, you'll notice on the left of the driveway where the fence was, we have a row of green giant arborvitae. Those are ones that they get that wide and tall, they grow to three feet a year, and they stay green year round.
And that was done based on input from the public.
That, that is absolutely correct. That was a public.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, 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 you don't. Same thing, you wanted us to come down the driveway. We essentially, you know, have the landscape here, you can come down the driveway. We thickened up everything up here and came around the corner. We stopped there because of cyclones, we had a snow storage area in here. So, we didn't want to block that or have it be damaged after here, snow plow it. So, we stopped there to buffer that up. And then here, we have another row of, a different type of arborvitae. Essentially, it's the one that's skinnier and tighter. It still grows tall, but it's not the big wide, the giant one.
So, it'll look like a hedge eventually?
Yeah, but it's, but it's more not like a shrub hedge. They, they grow tall, but it's, it's the thinner ones. The giant ones can get, you know, 12, 12 feet wide anyway, at least. We added that there because the concern was, well, it's coming in this direction, which that will screen that further. And then if you have a gas station perhaps coming out, you know, looking down this way, what doesn't get blocked here, that would get blocked there.
Okay.
So, we added those per the request of the public at the last meeting.
Just to pick up on my prior question, that if I was to see the dock side of the building above the trees, what, what is it going to look like? Is it a monotone color all the way across? Is it?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe the color staggered on the, on the backside of the building, is my recollection.
Yeah, in other buildings that we've done, we put a stripe of paint across the top. It might be three to four feet high, you know, to just offset the single monotone color all the way down, which is, which is no problem, if you do something like that.
You know, it's, it's an aesthetic.
There are reveals. So, there's indentations in the panels.
Just like on the other side.
Right, except there's not offset panels in this side. These panels would be straight, but reveals, which are indentations.
Okay.
Which is thick, about three quarters of an inch deep. And they run all along, just to give some texture above the dock doors, gives a texture to the, to the building. And what we've done in other buildings, they leave it's front facing, not so much when it's rear facing. But we can, we can put a stripe down there. So, for instance, if it's a tan base, we can put a little darker colored stripe down along the building just to break that.
Do like the detail on the concrete.
Breaks right together?
Yeah.
System written hat.
Yeah.
The front will look more with glazing and silhouettes, it'll be a little bit more depth. The back is more, is, is a little bit of straight line, just.
Yeah, I'm just concerned of the visuals, that's all. To the extent that you can see anything above the road, those trees and it's a prominent corner, so I don't want to impose my aesthetic will upon you, but if you think that stripe would add something.
Yeah, we tend to do that just because they're long, you know, it's 600 foot run, so they're very long. It gives you a little bit, you know, you have the dock, dock doors and above that, there's a wall back lighting, and then you have, you know, a, so the reveals and text, you know, that creates texture. Certainly, you can put the, a stripe of paint, I mean, it's not, it's nothing at all off of.
Again, again, I don't want to impose my aesthetics, whatever, if you think it would look better that way.
Can we make a note to have that attitude, a decision after it's moved?
And then, just to pick up on the conversation with the DOT, there's two on Mechanic Street. There's, there's a, if you're traveling, if you're on Maple, you take a right onto Mechanic Street. And there's a sort of a swing into the left to take a left turn into Rapid Refill. And then further down the road, there's like this do not enter, no man's land. And then there's a similar swing into a left to turn into Lindenmeyer, is that how you say it? You know what I mean? So, there's two, two left lanes, like that would go like this.
Yep.
And there's this no man's strip in between.
Yes.
In some communities, those left turn lanes, even though they're opposing, are shared. And what's happening, what I've noticed as we come out of this COVID period, that 140 going from the center of town towards Franklin backs up. And one of the reasons why it backs up is, of course, one thing that might be able to alleviate the backup is some people that want to get to like, say, the left turn lane to go to Maple Street have to wait in that line before they get past that no man's land. Just, and some people say, screw it, I'm just going to cut through it. I'm just going to take my chances. So, I thought it was, there's going to be conversations with DOT that there might be an opportunity to have a conversation about making that a sort of a shared left. The first one that gets there gets to take the left, basically.
I'm the police safety officer, it's in here tonight.
No, but if you look, if you look at 126 and Medway down by the Muffin House, I think.
Yep.
All on that strip is opposing laps. And it works fine. Just a thought. I thought that, because I, I know that I spend time like, oh, I've got to go through two flight cycles before I can finally get into it and it backs the traffic.
So, we have, you're saying there's a stripe, stripe in the middle that has both a left hand turn coming either direction?
Yeah, they've.
And then there's a no man's land.
There's a no man's land. This is, they said, don't come here. But people do it anyways, to, to do it. I think that's what Jim's showing you right now is an example of the Medway ones, where they see how they have two opposing.
Yeah, it is, right.
Now, Jim, who controls signage on roads?
Well, on 140 is absolutely will be DOT. I, I, I think the applicant could certainly make the, the ask for, from DOT to take a look at it.
Well, if there's, if there's an opportunity to have a conversation about that idea, and we're going to have, you're going to have these conversations anyways. Just ask that that be part of it, unless you think it's a horrible idea.
I personally hate those lanes, like myself.
Amy, can we sort of meld that in?
Suicide.
To the discussion of, for DOT in regards to traffic and other items that we probably built into this, this decision. So, that is two amendments at this point in time.
So, there's no security gates on the property to keep trucks from entering in? And I know we've had some problems in other parts of town, you might be aware of. I'm assuming that when we get to talk about the conditions, that you wouldn't be opposed to having some sort of language in there that says, hey, we're not going to have a security gate to keep trucks from entering your property at times.
The concern is if, if there was a gate at the entrance way and it was shut and there was no one there, then trucks would stack on Mechanic Street, which is the Board's.
Well, can I just interject for a moment?
Absolutely.
I think we've all been under the assumption since this started that your property will be able to handle all the trucks on property without putting anything on Maple Street or Mechanic Street. So, I think that should be, if it isn't clearly outlined, I can pick up on it.
Yeah, I think we need to clearly, when the time comes for us to talk, to discuss this, if it doesn't sound.
The gate cannot be added such that it would require
Would require.
Keep wire stacking offsite.
Yeah, you said, you know, or stacking will be on public, we'll be prohibited.
Something along those lines we get to talk about.
There'd be any objections to that.
Yeah, it's on your.
Right, it's, 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 the only concern I would have had is that we're restricting any type of privacy to the site. But we certainly can restrict stacking or out idling on town or on the.
Yeah, so the key is, I mean, we all, we're all for security for you.
Yeah.
But we've had other locations in town which will remain nameless in this meeting. That have kept, they have security gates that lock at certain times of days. You can't get onto the sites, the trucks are all piled up on key roadways. So, that's what this language would need to keep from happening.
We want to have something that doesn't restrict it, but has a condition about its use, so that we can enforce that. Or at least. So, it means, so for instance, if you, you don't, you don't necessarily want to say you can't create privacy on your site. You can't create privacy that impedes upon the public interest. So, the, the.
Can you clarify what you mean by privacy?
Some type of a.
That being security.
Security, yes, security.
Yes, we're not, we're not asking for that.
We're not, yeah, security's fine. We're all for security. Security inside, you know, inside the premises.
Right.
But nothing that would keep a line of trucks from coming in.
Understood.
So, that's what we're going to try to, when it comes time to talk about the discussion, you know, the language in there, that's going to be something. Yeah, I'm not looking.
Jim, can you point me to, on the decision where we mentioned anti-idling?
Mr. If if we may, if we're exhausted our review, we could, we could review the decision uh after once it's closed.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions from the board before we close? Is there more to ask for the public to speak?
Quick question?
Certainly.
I just want to backtrack to the landscaping. You specified the locations. Do you specify how mature the plantings are when they initially go in?
So there is a um a size when they go in. But yes, specify it's been, jury doesn't say like four years old. So it'll be technically a caliber or a or a height.
So initially they'll still be concealed.
Yeah, yeah, it's um. Answer for you, and again, I think the fence was a was a six foot high, high fence. So the plantings. It's five, we can buy the six foot. Same height as the fence and again, they grow through.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Okay.
It's actually condition number twelve, page eight of eleven.
Okay.
It's page eight of eleven.
Okay, I understand where I go.
Number twelve, and it's the very last sentence, no idling for longer than five minutes if vehicles and equipment are not in operation.
Okay.
To the extent that you care about the that pertains to the construction.
Progressive construction.
Yes.
It's separation.
I would also say that they have their choice about to comply with the law, that's as they exist as well, whether we say it or not.
I just wanted to outline. They also want the uh where it's, I've seen it in here in Laura, about snow and ice and vehicles. This is state police, is now, the state police are now enforcing that.
So am I hearing you want that as a separate? Separate, you want that sentence separate? So as a thirteen and then renumbering, is that what, is that what you guys are thinking, Brian, or what?
No.
Okay.
I don't know what I I just.
Are you okay where where it is now?
Yeah.
You are, okay, you're fine, okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Anyone in the public have anything you want to add in? I see Casey out there. You see any hands raised?
I do not see any hands raised.
I would entertain a motion at this point, and I apologize, we're not doing it earlier. Did you close the public hearing?
It's Dennis's stand.
No, that's the cursor.
Oh, is it?
I'd still like to get off the cursor for a minute and ask to close the public hearing. Have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the floor. We've been second to close the public hearing for two oh six Mechanic Street Warehouse. All in favor, please sit in five and say aye.
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 Careful, sorry. Aye. The motion passes announcement. I've been pointing to my right for six months. My my left, excuse me. Now, what I'd like to do is let us go through the decision. Jim, can you walk us through these? Give us like ten thousand feet.
Absolutely, so if we could start at a two oh six Mechanic Streets Development Plan Approval, opposed draft decision.
At the eleven page version?
Yeah, that is, yeah, that's the longer one. So it should be entitled Development Plan Approval up at the top on the page one there. So obviously, the first page or two is just outlining the administrative actions and items we have received. Determinations, we go, we sift through each of the determinations in terms of how it has met the bylaws, first starting with recognition that it has received multiple variances from the Zoning Border Appeals, which is incorporated into this decision. How it meets air quality hazardous materials, stormwater management, noise, how it's been peer reviewed for each of those. Furthering the findings on traffic, parking, emergency access, et cetera. Uh, and now the decisions where it gets into the kind of the meat of it. Each of the conditions here spelling out that obviously there's an opportunity for major or minor amendments in the future. Major amendments would require a new public hearing before this board. If if amendments deemed minor, you know, small changes, then it can be done administratively out of at a regularly scheduled meeting of the board. Number two talks about that extension of the right lane and reflects the exhibits that are posted online and were shared with you. You know, and in conformance with what we've talked about all along, two hundred and thirty linear feet substantially in conformance with the exhibit. Number three talks to the ornamental welcome wall that we've been discussing over time. It lays out some parameters in terms of length and and height or no or maximum length. And ultimately, that wall will be substantially in conformance with the exhibit, but gives a little leeway because I know the board was thinking about potentially putting together a subcommittee. So if you do decide to do a small sub design committee to finalize that welcome wall, there are some parameters in place. Ultimately, that wall needs to be substantially in conformance with the exhibit and the building commissioner will review and and work with you to to confirm that prior to any occupancy permit. I will point to the last sentence of number three that has been added since your first, your last draft uh earlier. Just that the welcome wall shall be donated to the town prior to occupancy permit. In addition, an easement to access and maintain the wall shall be granted in perpetuity prior to occupancy permit. If, I don't know if the applicant has any concerns with that language, but that, I think that's been the intent all along. We just wanted to spell that out, that the wall is be donated to the town, it's a welcome wall, the town of Bellingham. And and there will be an easement granted so that the town can maintain that wall. Number four talks all along about the the real, the the importance of the elevations and the design features of that. The transitions, the color depth, really getting some more specificity specificity on uh window location and depth so that we have, you know, a really nice elevation uh fi- final product there. Number five talks to uh the discussions that the applicant should have with mass DOT. And this is where it talks about the signalization timing study. It also talks about whether or not appropriate to extend the bike lane on Mechanic Street along the property. Certainly, if we want, we could add something to the effect of the Afghan shall review with the Department of Highways regarding the left turn lane access on Route one forty. You know, we could certainly add that to the last line there if the board wants. Okay, not a problem, I can, I can add that right away. Number six talks to kind of the coordination of truck traffic. Here we talk about how it enters on Mechanic Street, exits on Maple Street. And that it will equipped with the white noise whooshing sounds instead of the conventional beepers. I did add so that the applicants aware as well, no truck shall turn left on from the site onto Maple Street. I know that's again been the intent all along. Not not restricting employee traffic, but we're talking about truck traffic here. And so I I hope that's that's not of a surprise. If we want to add to this one as well, hearing the discussion earlier, we could be a little bit more robust in our decision, perhaps to want to add no stopping or idling on a public way, period, and no idling on site in accordance with anti-idling law. I certainly can add that. We can add that to the end of six there. As well as seven, because seven and six and seven kind of mimic each other. This talks about the seven talks about all the things that would be incorporated in a tenant or required by a tenant. So six and seven kind of marry each other, but just further that the tenant shall adhere to this. Number eight talks about the the program that the board has established for cleaning up the area and the seventy five hundred that would be donated kindly from the applicant. Number nine talks about a comprehensive signage plan that will be presented. So a lot, we had some conversation about different signage, making sure that no wall signage on the front facades shall be allowed. But also, this allows for you to look at the freestanding sign when it gets submitted to the building department for a building permit, making sure that it doesn't really clash with that welcome sign. That's mostly the importance of that one there. And then as we continue on, it's our, it's many of our standard conditions in terms of construction and sediment control shall be inspected by town planner or conservation agent. All work is done on site and and done during regular construction hours in accordance with our bylaws. No work on Sundays or holidays. You know, fencing the gap still, there's not much fencing on this site, but those fencing, if that can be raised just slightly for our wildlife, that's a standard that conservation has has appreciated us, including. Again, this other standard uh conditions for if the site is laid stagnant first time, it needs to be properly maintained. All lighting shall be dark sky compliant in accordance really with the plan, but nevertheless, the applicant shall permanently be responsible for the following of the project. All the plowing, sanding, snow removal, site maintenance, repairing on site, drainage structures, utilities, you know, et cetera, everything that we lay out there. Snow removal is responsible with the applicant, including the the commercial vehicles prior to leaving the site. I know that was a really good conversation the board had earlier.
One question there.
Yep.
It says removal of commercial vehicles prior to leaving the site. I think it should say snow and ice removal from or off of commercial vehicles.
Yep.
You follow me?
I got it off of commercial vehicles, yep, that's perfect. See, no phosphorus fertilizers. Any hazardous materials that with an end user will be notified so that we can properly permit or review. Number twenty three talks about inspections and review, and of course, master of law. Let's see, twenty four talks about all utility easements and other access easements necessary. And this is to the the decisions to the user, and we will want a as-built at the end of the day. So I can certainly make those those corrections for five and six, or and and incorporating that off. But happy to take any other comments as well.
Yes, sir.
Just one quick question, just my understanding on the signage, coming back to the to the board. Is that just an administrative, you submit something to Amy and come back and review the signs?
Yes, and we are going to have a subcommittee.
Okay.
Are you talking about the?
I I understand.
For the tenants, not that.
I I understand. I just want to clarify, that's correct, but we're also gonna have a subcommittee.
I just want to make sure that Wayne knows what he needs to do as architect.
Any discussion in the board?
I have a couple of questions. Jim, is there anything in the usual language in here that states that the screening and landscaping have to be maintained in perpetuity?
So it talks about the site shall be maintained in perpetuity, does it call out the landscaping? We certainly can make that an additional comment there.
But I don't want, you know, if we, I don't want to add complexity, but is there? Is there a need for that?
I believe they will agree.
Right, so the, so um we can, I would say, though, the only, the only caveat I would say is that it it does state that they will operate and maintain in accordance with the plan. Stating that the landscaping needs to stay in perpetuity might be somewhat of a concern in the long term as, you know, styles shift, different methods change. Perhaps they want the, you know, a future tenant wants to put additional plantings or trees or what have you.
But my concern wasn't necessarily the landscaping, it was the trees that provided the screening, that they would, you know, nineteen nineteen years from now, they're half dead, they cut them down and never replace them. Is there something that would prevent that?
I would, I would say we could, you know, town staff could make the argument, but no, there's nothing expressly stated in here, we could certainly add that.
If if there's no objection to that, I would, I would add something about maintaining the screen, just.
Absolutely, you make that.
Okay, you stress the case in a legal firm, so.
My next question is, do you think that we need to since the, and maybe we talk about this later if you want, but the 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 plan, I think, is that there's gonna be some subgroup that looks at the final design of this wall that's substantially in compliance with with the exhibit, but the the final cooking will be done by this other group. Do we need to spell it out?
I think what will happen, the intent of the special group is to get neighborhood involvement.
Yep.
Their recommendation to be at least one planning board member, not two, on the committee to bring it back so we can vote on it. Final decision for the board, not with the subcommittee, they will make a recommendation.
So then, do we want to spell that out in the decision itself?
I I think I had asked Amy earlier to men to reference the formation of subcommittee to draft plans for the sign. And we can add additional language to that.
And I, and I don't have the exhibits that's referenced in paragraphs, but is that substantial compliance of that design, does that include the reference to the Purple Heart community and also the historical placard that's existing there now? Or do we need to spell that out here?
That that is included in the exhibits there, but you know, we can further refine it however you like, but yes, it is in the images.
And I I do believe the apple is said they will try to preserve and protect that spot where the trolley tracks or whatever started. I don't see the applicant. You can probably delay it better, but have you seen it? I think we, when we toured it, we knew where it was.
Yeah. Yeah, so we don't have any problem restoring and protecting that particular placard.
Yeah.
And then the sign in the zoning decision, I believe it's a purple heart community, that's where.
I think we showed that on.
And then it's indicated on the sign.
And and just to be clear, it's not preserving that particular little metal placard that there is just incorporating that historical reference in the design of the wall.
Well, depending where where where.
It commemorates that the, that that corner being important in time.
Yes.
As a as a trolley stop.
Correct.
That should be part of, like, if there's a. I think that should be part of, like, if there's a, I will try to take that placard, maybe a little plaque, stick it on the wall or something.
I don't know how far away they are from one.
Sorry?
I don't, do not know how far away they are from one another.
Oh, no, that, that metal sign will be that, it's gonna have to go.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's gotta go.
Okay.
Yeah, it's more of the acknowledgement.
Okay.
Just making sure that it's in, you know, that's all I'm getting at, so we can.
Um. Our, our, our anticipation is that the drawings that we've designed will go, will go to your subcommittee.
Correct.
And there'll be some commentary back to us.
That's the envision.
And, and we would, uh, agree to the final.
It won't work with you, this is not.
That's right, so.
This will be very transparent.
Exactly.
Right.
So I, I, you know, in, in terms of what you're, you're driving out, what you're looking for, it's not, I don't see it as being.
I think it was, I just wanted to make sure it's in the, in the agreement so that, I, I know that we talked about that. Just want to make sure that it's part of the.
And, and maybe, Jim, the way to do that is just reference it on the drawing.
We, we could do that, um, I, I could offer you some language.
The, the, the decision, the decision, the drawing is what we're going to be using, I think, in practice, right? As we. So, so perhaps we just put on the drawing a reference to some recognition of the history.
Yeah, I, I think Jim is going to put something right in the decision to say, because it's going to be a back and forth. I think that's what Jim was just, just saying, he's got some language he has to offer.
Yep. Okay, I think we're there.
Yeah.
I, right, yeah, I, I, I thi- I think you guys are there, and I, I think simply, simply adding some language in, in the form of a subcommittee to be formed to provide a recommendation to the board for the final design. At approval at a regularly scheduled meeting of the board, um, so not a hearing or anything like that, just a subcommittee provides the recommendations back to the board, they, they give the thumbs up. Uh, and, you know, and, and we've laid out parameters within that exhibit, so we're not talking about tripling the size of it or anything like that, we're within the bounds that, uh, has been laid out in that exhibit.
Yep, perfect. For five, um, I think we had, or somewhere, we're going to add that discussion about, show them up, determine, that's fine. Jim, remember, under paragraph six on page seven, in paragraph seven. See where I am? The page seven, paragraphs, paragraph six and seven.
Yep.
Seven is actually part of six, but I don't think there should be a seven there, because it's part of the quote.
You're right, yep. Yep.
And that, just to correct very minor, uh, typo, at the, before V on both six, well, before, yeah, so, uh, last sentence of six, numbered paragraph six, it says beeper period V. It should be beeper comma of bone. The.
Yep, I see that.
Yep, and then the same thing is on the end of paragraph seven.
Right, yep, got it.
Thank you. And then, uh, in, in other, in other decisions, we've included a requirement that when bay doors or when, when they're not in access, they're closed. You know, that's appropriate in this situation? Or warranted?
Um, that brings a question up I may ask, that can, that could alleviate them. I'm sorry. In the past, we've had, um, some concern with people working inside on vehicles. With the doors open and the sounds coming out into the public. Do you plan to do any maintenance operation of your vehicles or any forklifts in-house?
So there, there's no access for vehicles.
Yeah, that's.
Okay.
So this loaded, this is.
There's only loading docks, but there's.
Yeah, I, I understand.
Or access.
Yeah.
And then.
But there would, I mean, there would be forklifts in the building.
Yeah.
Okay. What we would like to see done is some effort made to reduce noise inside the building outside.
Okay.
If you're operating on forklifts to, you know, to reduce the, the noise. Is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, the, the, the problem we've experienced, a little different in the, the low location that we're talking about here. But, um, there's some warehouses, facilities in town that leave all their bays door open, it's a nice day, they let the breeze in. They play music, they have pneumatic tools, and they're making noise and it's, it, and since it's funneled, it, it goes right out. So I think what, what Bill was trying to get at, and what I was trying to get at is if the, the bays aren't in use, that the, that the bays are closed.
Especially if I.
Well, they, I don't think I'd do that anyway, but especially.
Well, just, um, can I just, one sentence, something that sort of bothers me. Since these bays will be used for loading, if it's a hot day and you need to cool off the inside, I'm sorry, I don't see a problem with the bay being open to allow cool.
It's more about sound, right, that's, I think, what you were concerned about.
Correct. Mm-hmm, so I don't, I don't want you, want you to think we're going to ask you to close the bays, if you want to, you know, cool the building down. I just said, if there's excessive noise, we try to limit the noise entering the building. And the only thing I can think of is perhaps working your forklifts.
Jim, you talked about any service operation quite that. If forklifts are being used, wouldn't the bays be open if they're accessing?
Yes, I, I'm not, I'm not concerned with the use of the forklifts, loading and unloading the vehicles. But if they're working on the forklifts, re, you know, reconstructing them using, you know, pneumatic tools, that we want to keep that sound, especially during the.
Yeah.
Yep.
If it's as simple as explicitly stating that work will be done with pneumatic tools or, 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 or forklifts repairs and things like that, without the doors being closed, we're, we're fine with that. I have a harder time figuring out how you sound dampen any sound that might be coming.
Correct, we don't want, we don't want to go.
So I'm trying to get kind of to the specificity of what your request is, so that we can document it and actually comply.
Yeah.
Right, and, and that's, that's why my mind's doing it.
That's, that, we're, we're, we're close.
Mm-hmm, the issue is just, the doors are always just left open for, it's just, it's been open, whatever reason.
Mm-hmm.
And the sound emanates and it becomes a nuisance. And we just want, in the event that that happens, and I don't think likely because of the location of where this building is, that, that really anyone's going to hear it for care.
Right.
But to the extent that this becomes an issue, and things always become issues many years down the line, that the town at least can say, hey, guys, you got to keep your bay doors closed when you're not actively utilizing the bays.
And we used similar language before.
Mm-hmm, so Jim, do you have language that you've used that has been, that comes to mind?
I'm sure we, I'm sure we do have some, uh, language we could pull out, but I mean, something as simple as, as, you know, uh, I think maybe similar to or within, sorry, uh, section six here. I guess six, talking about, uh, trucks, that we could do similarly, something where the, your tenants, uh, shall, um, you know, maintain reasonable, um, sound and, and inter- when interior noise is excessive, it shall, uh, you know, do their best efforts to close, uh, close the bay docks or something of that effect.
Yeah, I mean, we, we're, we're sensitive to the community.
I, I.
And it's just.
We've always been.
It's just, it's just more of, of, for, for instance, if, if it's, if there's something from a tenant that's annoying the neighbors, right? And they get notified and that they should take care of it, right? So I think your language is one of those lines, Jim, you know, reasonably, uh, have take, take note or be reasonable around excessive noise within the normal operations with the doors open, something like that, right?
And I, I think that would give the building commissioner, uh, some teeth to say, hey, there was some intent here from the board to, uh, regulate, uh, you know, out, outside noise, and so, uh, we're going to need to, you know, be mindful of that.
I don't want to speak for the other board members. But, um, I don't want to tie your hands. So I, I think, you know, Jim can come up with language that will meet our needs and your needs.
Okay.
I don't think this is a subject like that.
So one quick thing, Jim, I know I brought this up in a previous, um, for a previous project. It's pertaining to number 23 for the decisions, that's page nine. Um, I think when I asked before, it was specifically for the construction phase SWIP. And I know during the pre-construction meeting with the town, that sort of dashed out and taken care of it, if I remember correctly. Um, one question that I have though, does the town typically require a copy of the, um, the ENOI authorization email when you have a NIPD's, uh, construction phase?
Yes, we, we ask for receipt of it, I mean, we, I, we should file it away typically.
We're pretty fair.
Yeah, I haven't seen that before.
But we, we don't, we don't do any, I would say we don't really do much with it though, locally?
Yeah, you, yeah, I, I don't, I don't think the town should, it's just, it's, it's good to have just to make sure that the SWIP has been filed and completed and we, is, I don't want to say happy, yeah, never happy, but.
We also, from time to time, will go on site and ask for, uh, if they have the SWIP on, on sites.
Gotcha, it's more if there's issues involved, which, I mean, that's just one thing, I don't know if, um, if that should be spelled out in the conditions that that confirmation email is just, it's, uh, submitted to the town boards, well, I should say planning department and CONCON, I would think.
We cer- we certainly can spell it out if you'd like, that's not a problem.
All right, um, I would ask that. Any other members?
I'm, I'm, that's your expertise. I'm going to get to mine in a second.
Um, yeah, and then the other thing too, I don't think it's in here, but it's regarding the screening. So do you have a, a general idea of how long you think that from when you start construction to when it ends? You have a general idea of how long you think this is going to take? I know these buildings go up pretty quick, um.
Yeah, it'll be, depending on when we start, when we get started, it'll be eight or nine months.
Eight or nine months.
You got to work out.
Okay. For.
Go ahead, I know where you're going.
Well, for screening, I was just going to say for the vegetation, um, I don't think it's spelled out in the O and M plan or in here, but maybe a two-year monitoring plan that if that's two years from start of construction, not two years after construction, but once your, um, landscape goes in, if some of the trees or a row of trees ends up dying or, or getting nailed by a truck during construction and those just get replaced after the two years, you know.
I think that contradicts the, the other condition you were talking about earlier, would give you more teeth, I think, to, to make sure that the landscaping stays. To make, so I think what was discussed earlier, I think covers that, right? Because I think the comment earlier was you want to make sure that the site is maintained. So if some of the trees die, I think that would be covered anyway.
That would be, so I'm clearly just completely missed that. Thank you, Brian.
I, I have a few questions, both emanating from a safety viewpoint. Um, safety data sheets or special manuals for your tenants also will require and provided to, uh, local authorities, correct? Okay, as well outlining of the, uh, although it's in here, the tenants will be told about removing snow and ice from the vehicles. Trust me, the state police will start to enforce that, you're going to be, you know, less than a mile from 495. So, um, if it happens once, they'll be out looking.
Mm-hmm.
Um, those are the only questions I have. Um, so I, I think what our next step is to, um, ask for motion to approve as amended the, um, 206 Mechanic Street Warehouse Development Plan and Approval, Approval, Stormwater Management Decision. Is that correct, Jim?
Yes, that is correct.
As amended.
Correct.
Do I have a second? Second. Any discussion?
One, one quick clarification, Jim, did we get the striping that they're going to add to the rear of the building? You have that in your, or can we add it, or do you think we need to?
I'm sorry, the, uh, paint striping?
Yeah.
On the side, you mean, of the loading docks? I think it was, I thought Amy caught that.
I don't know if we have that in there now, but we can add it.
Yeah, just as long as it's added somewhere, I don't.
Oh, oh, God, so a colored, a color stripe on the rear, uh, the dockside facade.
Yeah.
That works.
Any other questions? I would like to, um, call for the vote. Hi.
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 I pass the unanimous vote based on that. They come to the board at this point in time. Then I would like to move on to, um, flexible parking, uh, special permit decision. Jim, can you just clarify, I believe Rob is allowed to vote on this.
Yes, that is correct, Rob can vote on this one if you so choose.
And can you walk us through this?
Yes, so this one's, uh.
Find like, uh, what's different on here?
Right, so not much different, but the intent of this decision obviously is the flexible parking, so it's a reduction in parking. So really, all it boils down to is taking many of the conditions or just a couple of the conditions from the last uh, permit and refining it to just parking. So ultimately, what this permit says is that, uh, the board is granting a reduction in parking from 249 spaces to 115 spaces. And doing so.
Okay.
And doing so because you provided, or the applicant has provided, uh, you know, knowledge from other, other locations and studies that prove that uh, 249 is somewhat excessive, and obviously as the board, we, uh, would prefer to limit, uh, impervious surface when, when available.
Jim, for the public that are here this evening, can you just give an overview of, um, number three that follows after that?
Uh, the decision is binding, is that what? Okay, so this decision is binding with the, the successors, assigns agents and employees. The approval shall ensure to the benefit of binding upon howland development, provided there is no change in use for the premise. Playing board shall be notified in writing of any changes in affiliation, affiliates and successors entitled and additional users of the premise.
Any questions or discussion? Brian? I entertain a motion, and this is not amended, uh, to make a favorable, um, decision on the, uh, 206 Mechanic Street Warehouse, flexible parking special permit decision. Do I have a second?
Second.
We are motion for and seconded to approve the 206, as I said, Mechanic Street Warehouse, flexible parking special permit decision. As for discussion earlier, there was none. Uh, I will call for the vote.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Bye.
The motion passes, you understand. Um, at this point in time, I don't think there's anything we need to do on this, the decision has, the decisions have been approved. I want to thank the applicant for this process, they've made it very easy. I want to thank the. I want to thank the public out there, I want to thank the people who volunteered to be in the committee, fellow board members, and everyone in town who helped us to get to this point at this point in time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor of a adjournment, please, if you apply by saying that.
Bye.
You can go.
Bye.
Motion passes unanimously. Brian?